Mr. Garrity's plan for the future is to renovate the building, but it is fully occupied presently. He has lived in it himself. And, you know, there are no plans to do any work in regard to this application. There are future plans, of course, just to upgrade and renovate the property generally. And again, he and Mr. Garrity, if successful, this would be his home. The 29 rear building would be his home. We obviously went through the process with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We met with the local mayor association.
So, Mr. Quilty, you know,
Yes, ma'am.
the Mayor's office will give us all that information.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to hear from you as a representative of the applicant is the details. There are now, because there is the proposed building behind the building, there are now violations that are created for 29 Bigelow Street. And then there are a number of violations for 29 R. Bigelow Street. So can you speak through those violations? Tell us the size of the proposed unit. Tell us how parking is going to be accommodated for both, for all the four units being proposed. You know, give us the details so we can understand what's happening.
Yes, ma'am. I'll go through as much as I can. And I would probably turn it over to Mr. Chu and Mr. Trenier to get into further detail. But as to parking, number one, there is ample parking for 29. It already exists in the rear of that building. There's a great open space, if you will, closest to that building, which provides existing parking. And the parking for Mr. Garrity at 29R would be created in the garage, which you see is proposed as part of the plans for that property. There are many of the, I think some of the, especially as to 29, as I suggested earlier, I mean, all of these violations are existing conditions. It's an existing three-unit dwelling. He's not changing that. Obviously, it's in a 2F.
Tell us about the garage. So you're proposing to add a second floor. What's the total square footage for this? Will there be a basement to this garage?
The garage is the side addition, as indicated on the plans.
No, I'm sorry. Let me make it clear. Please give us more detail on 29R Bigelow Street. Will there be a basement to this building? And you're proposing, from what I see, a second floor? And you're proposing a roof deck on this 29R?
Yes, ma'am. As the plans indicate, there is a basement. And there is a garage addition on the side of the building. The basement, Arthur, you'd have to tell me. The basement doesn't appear to go under the garage, but rather under the main portion of the building, if you will, which is all the existing.
Okay. The basement is only under the living area of the house. The garage would be a slab on grade only.
And the basement was existing.
The basement was existing, correct.
Klemic, can you scroll down so we can see what the first and second floor look like? Okay? And what the rendering of that space looks like? Thanks. So the roof deck is above the garage. It's proposed above the garage. And this is a two-bedroom?
Correct, yes. Yes. So the roof deck goes off the master bedroom, if you will, and would go above that garage addition.
Okay. And the grade slopes down from the rear yard?
From, to the property to the rear, there's quite a drop.
Correct. The grades slow down in the rear of the building.
Yeah, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
No, drawings are fine. I think it's really just a question about whether having two homes on one lot is the issue.
Yeah. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board calling with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, looking on record of opposition to this proposal. We've definitely been in a meeting back on September 10th. 2019? I'm sorry, it sounds like there's a bit of an echo. 2019? But we recognize that the applicant is a lifelong Brighton resident. They received some support from adjacent of Butters. I know that there's particular concerns from the rear of Butters. It's very close to the rear property line, which we view as a concern. They also did not receive support from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. In our past, our office has supported detached units in the rear in Brighton. But those are the circumstances where there has been unanimous support from a Butters, direct to Butters. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Maureen McLeary from Councilor Breeden's office. Councilor Breeden would like to go on record as being in opposition to this project. We believe that the proponent has not adequately addressed the concerns of community members and direct to Butters.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We voted against this. That is a 2F zone. And he does currently have a three-family already. We feel that the area is too congested to be putting a house behind another house. And we cannot support that. Thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from Paul?
Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, may I hear from Paul, please? We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul Dancero, 28 Bigelow Street. I live across the street from this proposed project. And I am in opposition, but there are two things that I need to point out. There's a lot of misinformation provided by the person who spoke earlier. I've lived in this neighborhood for almost 40 years. And I'm not aware of any other carriage house that's been converted to a residence. The other thing that I want to point out is that the carriage house does not exist anymore. It is adding on to the carriage house. But the carriage house was torn down several months ago. And I believe it was done without a building permit. I don't know if that affects your considerations or not, but I just want to point it out that the work was apparently done without a building permit.
Thank you. May I hear from Karen? Go ahead. We can't hear you. You're still muted.
I keep taking my glasses.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Abbegeorge's office. Would like to go on record in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I hear from Camilla, please?
Hi, my name is Camilla Karnas. I'm a resident of the Oak Square neighborhood. And I totally support this project for Thomas Garrity and 29 Bigelow Street.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one more. I think she's not a raise her hand, Julie Miller.
Okay, let's hear from him. Go ahead.
Yes, hey, good afternoon. This is Julie Miller. I live at 28 Bigelow Street. I'm also a property owner.
I'm sorry, what do you live on?
I am at 28 Bigelow Street.
We just heard from Paul at 28?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So I am the owner of 28 Bigelow Street, as is Paul. And I just wanted to voice my opposition. The lot size is definitely too small. You know, even if there had been prior precedent to have any kind of carriage house conversions. The lot itself is very, very.
Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you off. Is David Bove, Bovey, Bove, ready to speak? Dave, you're muted.
Certainly, I think I'm here.
You think you're here, okay?
Can you hear me? Sorry. Can you hear me?
Put your name and address on the record and tell us.
My name is David Bove. I'm at 40 Adair Road. And Madam Chair, I really am opposition to this because I believe it's a quality of life issue. Because the proximity that we live, we directly on 29 Bigelow, as well as 31 Bigelow, as well as 27 Bigelow. The number of people in each of those homes would shock you. Would shock you. There's two people per bedroom in each of those. You can't sleep here in the summer with the windows open because the college kids are partying. There's so much loud noise. If they build another structure closer to our house, we can't even live in our home, basically, in the summer.
Thank you.
Cars parked in back lots.
Hold on, Dave. Hold on. Thank you. Given that information.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have 15, 15, 15, 15 letters of support. And we have five letters of opposition.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, would you allow Mr. Garrity to address the board?
No, thank you. I'm sorry. Dennis, sorry, Dennis. May I have a motion, please?
Hey, do you see a chance to change your password?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go back to the first case that I called earlier. Is Salletoga Street on? Madam Ambassador?
I'm looking. I don't see the third chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Okay.
Coast Guard.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned for four minutes until 12:30. In the meantime, anybody requesting a withdrawal or a deferral, please be in touch with Ms. Ambassador. The Board of Appeal for November 17th is back in session. Just a reminder for people who are on the phone. Please press star three to make your comments. Mr. Fortune, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 12:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 12:30? Could you please give me the address before you speak? Are there any raised hands, Madam Ambassador?
No, but there is one person who was handling 11 Fanduel Street.
Do you know who's representing them?
Sorry, I have my phone on mute. I thought it was Drago, but I didn't see him.
Madam Chair, it is on our paperwork to seeking a deferral. So if they are on.
Okay, let's give it a minute. Is Drago even on right now? Jeff, are you on?
He's not on.
Okay. Well, why don't we just go ahead with any other requests? If there are none, let's go ahead with the agenda.
I'll go call the first case, calling BOA 102-7687-596 Tremont Street. This is to build a new roof deck. The violation is Article 64, Section 34. Roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Fortune, I think there's also a building code issue related to this.
It is, Madam Chair. Sorry about that. Thank you for reminding me. There is a companion case, BOA 102-7690-596 Tremont Street. This is to build a new roof deck according to plans. The violation is ninth edition 780 CMR, 1011 stairways, 1011.12.2 roof access to a penthouse. Name and address for the record, please.
Is Mr. Little on?
He is.
Representing Mr. Little?
Eric Parker?
It's on the side to me here, I think.
Eric?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record and tell us what you're proposing to do.
Yes, Eric Parks, architect. I live at 54 Vinyl Flavin, Somerville, Massachusetts. This is a roof deck project. And we're seeking, as you mentioned, two things. One is a variance for the size of the roof deck. And the other is really from the building code requirements for the penthouse.
So tell us, is this, how many units in this building?
The building has four units. Oh, by the way, there's also Larry Mazzias, who is a homeowner. And he's hovering out there someplace, too, if you have any questions for him.
So four units. Tell us about how the access is proposed.
The access is going to be via a roof hatch. And we originally proposed this and got kind of caught up with the change with ISD starting to enforce the building code a little more rigidly about the penthouse requirement because we're four stories.
Yep.
So we went to a neighborhood meeting. And there was some pushback from the owners of an abutting roof deck. And Faesa, who was our neighborhood liaison at the time, reminded us that the South End Landmarks folks would not allow a penthouse that was visible from the side streets. And advised that we come back seeking relief from that section of the building code that requires that. And the, getting ahead of things here, you want me to keep going?
No, please hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings just show a roof deck and a skylight hatch. And as the board members well know, we always support a hatch over a penthouse.
Thank you. Anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Kim Crucioli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Our office held in a Butters meeting back on January 27, 2020, where the proponents presented their proposals to their neighbors who were generally in support of the roof deck. The only issue that came up was related to access. We support the proposal with proviso that access to the roof deck must be through a hatch, and we are opposed to access via penthouse. Thank you.
Welcome. You're the new South End liaison, then? Welcome.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you.
Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition to this project?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have three letters of support.
Okay. Is Anna on?
Anna?
Anna Calderon, she is on.
Hi, we have no comment on this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Anybody else to speak on this?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve and motion to approve the building code relief.
Is there a second?
Second, Legris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 106-6169-501 Sharmatt Avenue. This is a real window, create a new door opening, install new doors, install new decking on new balcony. Violation is Article 64, Section 9.4, townhouse/row house extension. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Coast of Legris can recuse myself on this one.
You see, I'm here for this project. Is Mr. Allen on on this project?
No, I don't see that person. I do have a raised hand, but I don't know if they are issuing public comment or they are presenting for this case.
Okay, let's hold off on that and move on to the next cases. Rossmore Road. Sorry.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 111-2536-36 Rossmore Road. There's a companion case, BOA 111-2531-34 Rossmore Road. This is for 36. This is a rectory three-family dwelling. The violation is Article 55, Section 40, our street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 40, our street parking design and maneuverability. Article 55, Section 9, the laudiere for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the flurea ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Madam Chair, for 34 Rossmore Road, it's the same purpose and it's the same violation. Name and address for the record, please.
Is somebody here presenting the scales?
Yes.
Yeah, she's on mute.
Scales and the architect for the project.
Okay, so please, can you speak up, please, and tell us what's being proposed?
Yes, we're here for two hearings. One is for 34 Rossmore Road and one is for 36 Rossmore Road. These are two side-by-side new buildings. They're both three stories high and each contains three dwelling units.
Okay, so are these two buildings on the same, no, so it's 34? Is 34 an existing building or has it been demolished?
There's a building demolished on the site of 34. So these are two brand-new buildings on two different lots.
Okay.
And there is a shared driveway up the center of the lot to.
Was this addressed before the Board of Appeal in the past?
No.
No, okay. Anna, these are not three fabs? They are stick-built?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Tell us, so it's two three-family dwellings. Tell us about the number of bedrooms. Are they two bedrooms or three bedrooms?
They're all two-bedroom units in both buildings. All six total units are two-bedroom units.
And tell us how the parking is going to work?
Yes, the entrance to the parking is off of Rossmore Road. And there's a shared driveway on the shared property line between the dwellings. You drive to the back of the property and there are. and there are two parking spaces per lot for a total of four parking spaces. So for when you enter the driveway, at the end of it, you turn left for two spaces for number 34, and you turn right for two spaces for number 36.
Okay. Hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
To the architect, were you saying there's four spaces on each side or four total?
Four total, two on each side.
Okay, okay. Yeah, the drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, is there an easement for the shared driveway?
It will be.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutter's meeting was held for this project on August 6, 2020. The applicant worked closely with the abutters and the community to address concerns. They received support from the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Councils. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClary from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, no.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have one letter of support.
Okay. Miss Ambassador, any raised hands?
No.
May I hear from... Is Kim... Is there a raised hand from Kim and one from Jennifer?
Kim is from a previous case.
Okay.
She couldn't unmute herself at the time.
Okay.
I'll check on Jennifer. Jennifer?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm Jennifer Urhean. I live at 47 Rossmore Road, diagonally across the street from these two projects. And I just wanted to say that the developer, Mr. Lyden, worked very well with the community. He listened to everyone's concerns and implemented changes accordingly to achieve a good project for the neighborhood. So I'm in support of these two projects.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with two provisos. BPDA, Design Review, and executed easement between the properties for the shared driveway.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling the next case, calling BOA 111-8167, 10 Old Colony Terrace. This is direct, a new single-family dwelling and re-existing building on a separate permit. The violation is Article 29, Section 4. This is in the G-Pod applicability. Article 65, Section 9. The front yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mark Lyden, 10 Old Colony Terrace.
Tell us what you're proposing to do?
I'm going to raise my existing home, single-family home, and build a new single-family home.
Okay. So, let's see. So tell us about these violations. So it sounds like, is it a bigger footprint?
In the front yard, just the garage is over two feet. The backyard, my surveyor and architect told me that we were within the setback, but I have to take the word of the planner. But I sent her an email asking her how much I was over in the back, but she never got back to me.
Okay, so hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawing is straightforward.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Pat Van Dell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. This went through a full community process, including an abutter's meeting in October, as well as a presentation in front of the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association, who voted to support this proposal as well. With that, we'd like to go on record in support of this. Mark's been a lifelong member of Savin Hill, and he... It's his property that we'd like to support.
Madam Chair, Jill McEckren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. We'd like to also go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Abbege, Georgia's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Miss Ambassador, any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case.
Sorry, Mr. Secretary, I think you were looking for me. I had technical difficulty. It's Jeff Drago on an administrative deferral.
What is the address?
It was 11 Faneuil, 1230.
All right, let me just... Got a lot of disturbance in the background. I'm going to call in for the record. BOA 102-4095, 11 Faneuil Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 11 Beacon Street, with Drago in Tuscano. We are seeking a deferral. There was a note for an administrative deferral. It was advertised incorrectly. So that would need to be re-advertised.
Make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second at the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date?
The date of February 23rd.
Thank you.
At what time?
I believe it's 12:30.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're going to get back to the next case, calling BOA 112-4403-160, Geneva Avenue. This is a new nine-unit building with elevator. The first floor will house an entrance lobby. Floors 2 to 4 will each contain 3 to 2 three-bedrooms and a total of nine units, two retail spaces on the first floor. The violation is Article 50, Section 28. A local retail is conditionally used in an MFR sub-district. Article 50, Section 29. Additional lot areas insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. The usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The rear yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43. Off-street parking and loading required. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Mary O'Neil. I'm the architect speaking on behalf of the project. My address is 181 Boden Street in Dorchester, Massachusetts.
Can you figure out why you're holy, please?
I'm sorry? Can you say that again?
I am very echoey. You please bring it up.
Yes, one second.
Um, are you all set?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go put your name and address again on the record and tell us what's being proposed.
My name is Matt. I'm the architect representing the developers in this project. My address is 181 Boden Street in Dorchester, Massachusetts.
So tell us what's being proposed, please. Pick up your pace.
Madam Chair, Mr. Mueller.
Mr. Mueller, could you please confirm that you're not the beneficial owner? You're representing them?
Excuse me, say that again?
Are you the beneficial owner or are you just the architect representing the developer?
I'm just the architect representing the developer, yes.
Okay, thank you. Proceed.
So this is a nine-unit residential block with three beds, two bath units per floor. The first floor has two retail units. There's no parking on site. And that's basically it.
Tell us about the size of the units.
Each unit is approximately 1,200 square feet.
Okay. And tell us why you've not included any parking?
We reached an agreement with the Neighborhood Association, and they prefer to have retail units instead of onsite parking. Our initial proposal had nine parking spaces. And they preferred, since it's right next to a commuter rail, to have retail instead of parking.
So what happens to those people who may walk odd hours?
Well, there's off-street parking and there's commuter rail and a bus stop nearby. And this was what the community preferred. So this is how we signed.
Okay. And the retail spaces, what is the zoning district? Is this an MFR?
This is an MFR.
Okay. So you're proposing, and this is an elevator building, bike storage, et cetera. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
And parking spaces. So I assume that's now outdated, correct? Mr. Mueller?
We said updated plans before the deadline. That does not have parking in it.
The drawings don't show any parking. They just show retail. The drawings are fine.
Okay, yeah.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Greetings, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Chantal Lima-Barboza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My predecessor held the community process for this proposal. While the applicant received support from the community, there are concerns in regards to parking safety and traffic, which is detailed in the Greater Boden, Geneva Neighborhoods Association letters. The Mayor's Office would like to encourage the applicant to continue to work with the community to address those concerns. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support the proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we would also like to go on record in support, echoing the comments of the Mayor's Office.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have two letters of support, one letter of opposition.
Thank you. Raise hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You know, the issue I have, Mr. Mueller, with this project is, one, it's a multifamily residential. The relief goes with the property and not with the owner. And I find it very difficult to start inserting retail in there because I know we're seeing projects with retail because it helps with the financing. But this is a residential district. And I know everybody tells us, yes, we're in proximity to, you know, X number of bus routes, X number of public transportation options. But the problem becomes there are those people who walk off schedule. And that's why it's very difficult to have a project with absolutely no parking for somebody who might walk at, I don't know, Logan at 3:00 in the morning or someplace like that. And so I'm having a really hard time with this project for those reasons.
If I may, our initial proposal had nine parking units. We, because we're always sensitive to people who want parking, this community, both the abutters and the local community, requested that we provide retail space there. There is a couple of small retail shops nearby, so it's not out of place. And we're trying to abide the way the community wants.
Yes, but sometimes, you know, zoning, zoning prevails or people who, you know, have a longer history with land use perhaps need to think about this. So I'm wondering if there is a way of decreasing your violations by looking at a way to accommodate on-street parking through Design Review. So perhaps eliminating one of those or both retail spaces and looking at off-street parking. So may I have a motion that may somehow address that?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve with a Design Review and, you know, Jeff will have heard your comments.
Jeff, so that's clear, okay? So to reduce the retail space and provide some off-street parking. Is there a second?
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 105-3337, 64 Clockwood Street. This is a construction of four new townhouses. The violation is Article 60, Section 9. Usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 11, the use is forbidden. Article 60, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lochner Bayes. And I'm an engineer who are on the plan. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, and I would like to make a... For that following meeting, neighborhood meeting, that we had brought the project to a three-family rather than a four-family.
Okay.
The plans that you're looking at is a standard three-family, triple-decker, 27 by 58, which meet all the zoning requirements except for the lot area, which is called 6,000.
Let's, can you hold on for a minute? Can we make sure, Mr. Ehrlich, do you have the revised plans that show a three-family?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Okay, and how are the plans?
The plans are adequate.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is there any, so there's no basement living and it's set up like a regular triple-decker? It's not townhouses?
Yeah, the basement is empty, no living space. There's a first floor, second floor, and third floor, and then an attic with, empty attic.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
I have some raised hands, Madam Chair.
Is anybody from the Mayor's Office or City Councilor's office to speak on this?
Madam Chair, Whitney Celeston should be able to unmute if the host can unmute her.
Okay.
Yeah, just on the record. She's a panelist, so she can unmute herself.
I'm here. Sorry about that. Whitney Celeston with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Thank you. Anybody from the City Councilor's office? Okay, may I hear from Ms. Ali Salam?
How do I unmute? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please, your name and address on the record.
Fatima Ali Salam, 34 Burma Street, Matapan.
Excuse me. Are you in support of this proposal, 64 Clockwood?
Salam is the proponent, six, two, three-family and not four-family.
Okay, thank you. How about Romaine Mills? I cannot see the rest of your name. Romaine Mills Tech? Can you please put your name and address on the record?
Yes. Romaine Mills Tech, 68 Clockwood Street, Matapan, Mass. I'm speaking in opposition, Madam Chairman, of this proposal. Today is the first time that we have been able to see these plans with any changes that he has made in reference to changes to these townhouses. The neighborhood has not seen these plans. There's not been another neighborhood meeting to discuss the changes that were submitted and are being offered up for approval today. We would like to have an opportunity to address him and the changes that he is proposing with the neighborhood.
So, may I just ask, um, the plans that we see before us, um, look like it's, it's a three-family proposal, um, like a, a typical design of a triple-decker. It's not the side-by-side townhouses.
Right, but this is the first time we are seeing them, Madam Chair.
But, but I just want to ask you, is, would there be any, uh, opposition to that kind of design, because it may be more reflective of what's in the neighborhood?
Yes, there would be opposition. There would be opposition.
Okay, go ahead, Rodine.
I'm s- like, I missed my nose for a second, and I looked away from my screen. I testified, um, the wrong position for this, uh, proposal. For sixty-four Clarkwood, we'd like to go on the record in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, may I hear from caller user number thirty-three? I don't know who that is.
Caller, you're unmuted.
Please put your name and address on the record. Okay, let's skip to caller user number thirty-two.
Caller, you're unmuted.
My name's, good, good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, my name is Coletta Mills, sixty-eight Clarkwood Street, and I too am in opposition of this. Um, as it was previously stated, um, this is the very first time that we are hearing about any changes to the plans for this, um, development on this property, um, to coming from the, uh, townhouses to now a three-family. And a three-family also isn't in line with the look of the neighborhood. The majority of the homes on the neighborhood, in the neighborhood, are a two-family home. And as it stands right now, parking is a complete nightmare-
Okay.
-within this street, and it would just, I feel as though it would just add more problems, and-
Okay.
-it's just not sufficient.
Thank you, because parking, okay, um, can I, um, uh, get, um, let's see, uh, Brenda Chaney on?
Brenda, you're unmuted.
Uh, okay, um, my name is Brenda Chaney. I live at sixty-one Clarkwood Street, and I was disappointed to not get a, a second, um, time to look at any of proposal that was supposed to be given out to us, um, because I was at the first one that was in September, or late October, early October. Um, and we were told we would get more information. I am highly against having, um, a three-family, um, building on Clarkwood Street. We all, most of us are owner-occupied, two-family homes.
Thank you.
All of us in this area are two-family, owner-occupied homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Well, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to defer. I, it just seems to me that, uh, that the applicant is, is changing the design and did not consult with the community about the altered design. So I think the process needs to continue to get played out.
Thank you.
Second, Madam Chair, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, anybody opposed? Motion carries, motion carries. What is the date, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, hold on two seconds here, I'm trying to get to the correct date. We're out of February, so we're definitely into March now. March ninth, Madam Chair.
Okay. March ninth, ninth at what time, please?
Twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty, okay.
Madam Chair, for the record, I want to make sure that we want to do this correctly here. There are twelve cases coming up front of us. They're multiple, different, one-family, two-families. So I'm gonna try to do it as efficiently as I can.
Okay, hold, hold on, hold on, Mr. Fortune. Can we go back to five oh one Shawmut and get that person, uh, taken care of, and then do this? Okay?
Ho- hold on a second. For the record, calling BOA 106-6169, five oh one Shawmut Avenue. Mister Remove Window, create a new door opening, install new doors, install new decking, add new balcony. Violation is Article sixty-four, Section nine point four, townhouse, rowhouse extension. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, just reminding you and, uh, Secretary that I'm accusing on this. Ligris.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here for Shawmut, um, Ms., um, Ms. Miller? Ms., um-
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Frances? Frances, you're unmuted.
Listen, if, if, uh, we need you to hustle and get on this, uh, on this and talk, please. Somebody's not paying attention.
Frances, you're unmuted. You're raising your hand, but you're off, you're unmuted, so you can speak.
Okay, um, well, let's, let's, actually, let's go back then. Uh, sorry, Mr. Fortune, until, until the sky gets his act together, let's group, move on. And let's do all the Ward fourteen cases together. And then, uh, even though they're similar to Ward seventeen, let's just make sure that we are, uh, separating them by Ward, okay?
So why don't we do this, Madam Chair, if it makes life easy? I do have a breakdown of how they are. Like, the first two cases are the same purpose, same violations, and then the next two cases have the same violation, the same purpose-
Yeah.
-next two cases. Let me do this. So I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call- Calling BOA 11069-3914, Lawn Street. There's companion, there are all companion cases, but it's a similar case, uh, BOA 1106908, twelve Lawn Street. This is for twelve Lawn, erect a new semi-attached, single-family dwelling, propose one on-street parking. Violation is Article sixty, Section nine. Lot area is insufficient, Article sixty, Section nine, lot width is insufficient, Article sixty, Section nine, lot frontage is insufficient, Article sixty, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. So, Madam Chair, twelve and fourteen are the same purpose and the same violation, so I'm gonna leave that. It's gonna get a little confusing here.
Okay.
This is for nineteen Angel and twenty-one Angel. This is BOA 11069-5619-Angel Street. There is a companion, similar case, BOA 11069-4521-Angel Street. This is a subdivide lot into two lots, and Lot A to erect two, new detached, two-family residential dwelling with one on-street parking. The violation is Article sixty, Section nine. The side yard is insufficient. And that is gonna be the similar case, the same purpose, at twenty-one, and the same violation at twenty-one. Angel. This is for twenty-two Angel, and then twenty-eight Angel. This is, let's call them to the record, BOA 11069-4822-Angel Street, and a similar case, BOA 111, 11069-5428-Angel Street. This erect a new, single-family residential dwelling, propose one on-street parking. Violation is Article sixty-six and nine, the side yard is insufficient. And that's a similar for twenty-eight Angel, same purpose and same violation. And then we'll go to thirty-seven Angel, which is completely, totally different, uh, and thirty-nine, the same. Thirty-seven and thirty-nine are gonna be the same. So, BOA 11069-5837-Angel, and a similar case, BOA 1106960-39-Angel. This is a subdivide lot into two lots, erect two new semi-attached, single-family dwelling, townhouse style, propose, propose one on-street parking. Violation is Article ten, Section one, a limitation of area of accessory uses. Article sixty, Section forty, a location of on-street parking in the front yard. And Article sixty, Section forty, on-street parking, design and maneuverability. Madam Chair, those, those are the same violation, the same purpose and same violation as thirty-nine, and that concludes Ward fourteen. Do you want to leave it at that, then we can go to Ward seventeen, outside?
Mister Parent, put your name and address on the record, and speak to the construction of these ten, uh, ten dwelling units.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ralph Parent, fifteen Greenock Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts. I have with me our architect, Rashmi Ramaswani. Uh, my partners and I have been designated by the Department of Neighborhood Development to develop new construction affordable homes on city of Boston-owned foreclosed land. These are vacant infill lots that once had homes that were demolished. We are seeking relief from multidimensional regulations and other violations. The type of homes that we built were single-family homes, two-family stacked, and side-by-side duplexes. We will work in conjunction with Department of Neighborhood Development and the Boston Home Center, and all the homes will be sold as affordable. Thank you.
Okay, um, we, um, okay, uh, can we see, um, flash through the screen, um, the layouts for lo- for each one of these? Lawn Road, Angel, uh, all the Angel Streets, please? Thank you, that's Lawn Road, okay? Okay, um, Colette, can you please pull up thirty-seven to thirty-nine Angel, and please, if the applicants could speak to, um, the parking and maneuverability on those parcels?
Rashmi, are you on?
Yep.
Please put your name and address on the record and tell us about Angel Street.
This is Rashmi Ramaswani, under Hampshire Street, Cambridge, Mass. Um, and I'm the architect for this project. Um, so, these are two side-by-side residences, and, um, each of them has a driveway. The driveway width is eight foot six inches. Um, I mean, it allows for a small landscape buffer adjacent to it. So, uh, the idea is that these can be used for tandem parking, that the car would back out, um, into the, uh, street.
Okay, because I see that on, um, let's see, it's thirty-nine Angel. Uh, Colette, can you pull, please pull up thirty-nine Angel? Um, that one of the violations is parking in the front yard, so we just need to get a better idea of what that looks like.
Madam Chair, I believe that's also thirty-seven as well.
Yeah, they, they're pretty similar. Um, so the driveway is adjacent to the, the building, and, um, currently, we have aligned the parking area with where the building is located. Um, I think you might want to just go to the site plan, please, if you don't mind. And if, I don't know if it's easy to zoom into it, but you can begin to see that, um, the, the intention isn't to use the front yard to park. We, you know, we had dimensioned the driveway to be, uh, past the front yard. Um, so I'm a little surprised that that was flagged as a violation.
Okay, thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Um, the drawings, you know, they're all, there's variations, but they're, they're all adequate.
Yeah, okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. As we understand, these are, uh, affordable housing units, uh, in partnership with the, with the Department of Neighborhood Development, uh, and we're excited to see these homeownership opportunities, uh, coming to Mattapan and greater portions of, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of South Bay, George's office. We would also like to go on record of support. Thank you.
Um, Fatima Ali Salam, are you here to speak on behalf of this project?
Uh, yes, uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Um, Fatima Ali Salam, thirty-four Burma Street, Mattapan. As Chair for the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, uh, I speak in support for the ten properties as listed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask the applicant a question?
Hold on, hold on one minute, please. Let me just see, is there anybody else to speak on this project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, the Vice City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, council to go record.
Thank you. Uh, caller user, uh, number thirty-two, is that mine or?
No.
Oh, please go ahead, uh, caller user number thirty-two.
Ian Conway raised her hand, but then she put it down.
Okay. Uh, please, Mr. Olick, go ahead. What was your question?
Well, having to do with the affordability, uh, in case the original owner, uh, sells, is there a deed restriction to maintain affordability?
Yes, there is. Um, this is, this will be guided by the Department of Neighborhood Development. They set the affordability price. Um, our team is simply to develop the properties. Uh, Boston Home Center will provide, um, a qualified buyer, and it, they, I believe they're being sold at eighty percent AMI and a hundred percent AMI.
What, what happens if the original buyer sells?
There, there was, the restriction stayed with the properties written into the deed.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPA design review.
Um, Mr., um, Jeff, do you need design review?
No, Mr. Gero, uh, D and D does their own design, so we don't have to look at it.
Okay.
They have a blank, um, and, so, um, so the motion is for approval. May I have a second?
Second, Carol.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna call the next four, which are Ward seventeen, uh, into the record. And they are different, except for the last two. So this will be BOA 11069-63242 to 244 Noel Street. This erect a new, single-family residential dwelling, propose one on-street parking. The violation is Article ten, Section one, limitation of area of accessory use. Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, location of on-street parking. Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, on-street parking, design maneuverability. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. This is for seventy-eight Spencer Street. Calling BOA 110-6967, seventy-eight Spencer Street, erect a new, single-family dwelling, propose one on-street decking. Violations, uh, Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. The last two, this is for one thirteen and one fifteen Wheatland Street, Wheatland Ave. BOA 1106968, one thirteen Wheatland Ave. BOA 1106972, one fifteen Wheatland Ave. This is subdivide the lot into two lots, direct a new semi-attached, single-family dwelling, townhouse style, propose one on-street parking. Violation is Article ten, Section one, the limitation of area accessory use. Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, on-street parking location. Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, on-street parking, design maneuverability. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor ratio is excessive. It's the same purpose and the same violation for one fifteen. Name and address for the record, please.
Parent, fifteen Greenock Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts. So I have with me our architect, Rashmi Ramaswani. Uh, my partners and I have been designated by the Department of Neighborhood Development to develop new, affordable homes on city of Boston-owned foreclosed land. These are vacant lots that once had homes that were demolished, so we are seeking relief on multidimensional regulations and other violations. The types of homes that will be developed are single-family homes- The types of homes that will be developed are single-family homes, two-family stacked, side-by-side duplexes. We are working in conjunction with the Boston Home Center and the Department of Neighborhood Development, and all the homes will be sold at an affordable rate.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, again, uh, there's some variation, but they're all fine.
Okay, i- is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Once again, we would like to go on record, uh, in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we would also like to go on record in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, would like to, uh, from Councilor Savvy George's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Councilor Michael Flaherty, council to go on record.
Thank you. Can you hear from Anne Conway, please?
Hello?
Put your name and address on the record, please?
Sure, hello, my name is Anne Conway. I'm a Housing Development Officer with the Department of Neighborhood Development at twenty-six Fort Street. This project is a hundred percent affordable home ownership. It has gone through-
Anne, 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 thank you, don't, I don't mean to be rude. I thought you might have been in the butter, because we, we do know about the D and D developments. Can we, uh, hear from Colin User, number thirty-two?
Um, Madam Chair, uh, woman, that, um, caller, something's wrong with their connection, and she was on a, a couple of cases prior to this one, so.
Do you see any other raised hands?
No, there are no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
You have a motion, please?
Motion, motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second, second, licorice.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, would you like to go back to Shawman Ave?
No, no, is that person now, Miss Ambassador, is that person ready for us?
He's having major technical issues, but, um, Mr. Clark, if you can try to, if you call in the record, I think he said he was gonna call in, so, but I don't know where he's calling.
Miss Ambassador, tell us when he's ready, uh, once he's called in. In the meantime, let's, let's proceed, okay?
I don't know which one he's calling in from, that's the issue on my end. So, if, you know, I mean.
Okay, um, uh, Mark, let's just hold off on it and just, just continue.
Okay. Madam Chair, uh, the next case that we do have is Bowden, uh, Bowden Street. I believe there was some miscommunication, because they have it scheduled for the subcommittee on Thursday, but I don't know if they're online. Is Bowden Street online?
Um, it looks like Doug Wan. Doug, are you on, on this, on this case? Is, uh, I, uh, Miss Ambassador, do you see Doug Wan?
I'm, I'm looking, the, uh, you, I think it's, no, I don't, but Eileen Rosa has been contacting me. She said yesterday she was gonna be, she was gonna be present, I believe, so. Do you want to hear from her?
Uh, yes, please.
Eileen, uh? Hi, Eileen, line, Eileen, you're on, um, unmuted.
Hello, hi, uh, my name is Eileen Rosa.
I, um, can I just ask you, are you going ahead with your project today?
Uh, actually, I just wanted to check in, uh, supposedly I got pushed out to the subcommittee meeting at five o'clock this Thursday. I just wanted to introduce myself and make sure it's, uh-
Excellent, so, um, Mr. Fortune, for the record, um, this, this project will be heard on, on Thursday. Miss Ro- Miss Rosa, we'll see you then.
Very well, Madam Chair.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, so I'll make a motion for that to be deferred to the Thursday Subcommittee at five PM on November nineteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm gonna call the next case, calling BOA one-one-one-five-zero-nine-five-ten-to-ten-eight Hallet Street. This is directing new four-story, two-family dwelling on a vacant land. The violation is Article sixty-five, section eight, a two-family dwelling is forbidden use. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Tim Johnson, on?
Yes.
Yes, I'm on. Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, Tim Johnson, five ninety-nine East Broadway, Boston. My client, Jim Pascal, is, um, hand-raised. Uh, this is in the one-F, five-thousand sub-district. It is a vacant through lot. My client is proposing to erect a four-story, two-family dwelling with a two-car garage, situated between an existing three-family and two-family dwelling. The main entrance to the project will be off Hallet Street. The garage entrance will be in the rear off Ann Street, which is a twenty-foot wide private passageway. Uh, these, both units, Madam Chair, will be duplex units. The lower duplex will be a two-bedroom at fifteen hundred square feet. And the upper duplex will be a three-bedroom at two thousand square feet.
So, Tim, I just need to get, um, a, uh, here, I am looking at the, um, Google Maps, and it's next to that, uh, beige house, um, this is the project next to the beige house, but, um, let's just see, so, and then beside the parking lot? Is that the Walgreens parking lot?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, um, the, on, on the screen right now is the vacant lot between the, the existing three-family on the left and the two-family on the right.
Okay, so, um, yeah, okay, okay, thank you. Please go ahead. Oh, I, I, it's, it's one over, okay?
Okay, excuse me, excuse, uh, and, Madam Chair, these are both duplex units, and they all, all will have rear decks only. Uh, and then I could go through the zoning relief required, if you wish.
And is this, is this a, um, a previously plotted lot, or is this a subdivision that resulted in this lot?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, ma'am, this is a, a previously plotted lot. We are, we, we submitted for no subdivision plan.
Okay, and it's similar in size to the abutters?
Yes, the, uh, three fam- Uh, yes, Madam Chair, the three-family on the right is approximately thirty-five feet from sidewalk. This project is also thirty-five feet from the sidewalk. The two-family on the right is about thirty-two feet from the sidewalk.
Okay, so please go ahead, tell us about the, so the, and what's the size of the units?
Yes, uh, these are both duplex units, Madam Chair. The lower duplex unit is a two-bedroom at fifteen hundred square feet. The upper duplex is a three-bedroom at two thousand square fe- square feet. There is a grade change between Hallet Street and Ann Street of approximately four feet. And I could go through the, uh, zoning relief-
Tell us how parking is going to be accommodated?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. In the rear, there is a twenty-foot wide shared passageway between all the abutting properties. So that will be, that will be how the rear garage is accessed. There's a view coming up on the screen of the, uh, rear of the building.
Okay, and, um, Tim, you know, you're before this board often enough, and you get approved often enough, so please do not put placeholders as, uh, as renderings or as drawings. Please try and make it so that it's contextual, you know, because, uh, this kind of raises my ire every time I see, um, these placeholder, these placeholder sketches that are, that come in for, uh, to, you know, before this board. And this is not, you know, you specifically, but it's, um, a lot of the projects we're seeing. So I'm just gonna give you a heads up, because you come before this board often enough.
Understood.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, the drawings are okay. Uh, Mr. Johnson, the, is it, um, is there a curb in that, uh, passageway requiring a curb cut, or is it just, uh, the same grade as the driveway access? In the rear?
Uh, the, the, yes, uh, the rear, uh, passageway, uh, Mr. Olick, is a private way, and it's really gravel and grass.
Okay, so, so, so there's no, okay, so there's no, there's no curb, like, for a sidewalk there?
That's correct, and, um, uh, I spoke with Todd Lyming, uh, on a similar project. Uh, they have no jurisdiction over these passageways. They're, just maintained by the abutters.
Okay, all right, the drawings are fine.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandell, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Um, we'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. There was a community meeting held in October, uh, and the applicant also submitted, I believe it was five letters of the butter's support from the area of butters. Um, we would just ask for continued BPDA design review, um, but would like to go on support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Savvy George's office. We'd like to go on record for support in this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do, the secretary here, we have one letter of nine signatures.
Of support?
Of support, yes.
Yeah. Um, given this information, um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please, uh, Mr. Hampton, make sure that there is extensive design review, so we, um, make sure that it's, uh, far more contextual, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Motion carries, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-one-two-three-three-eight-two-two-seventy Talbot Avenue. This is a proposed project, includes a four-story building with twenty-one apartments and about twenty-seven hundred square feet of retail. Project also includes eight-nine off-street parking spaces. The violation is Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street loading is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section forty-two, conforming with an existing building alignment. Article sixty-five, section eight, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section eight, a retail store is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section eight, restaurant is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section eight, office is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height, number of stories is excessive. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Jacob Taylor, I'm with Klein Hornig, uh, one-on-one Arch Street in Boston, and I'm counsel to Travis Lee and Tealy Development LLC. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, the proposed two-seventy-half project is a four-story, twenty-one-unit workforce housing development with approximately two, uh, two thousand seven hundred square feet of commercial space on the ground floor, uh, divided into two separate commercial units. Um, and the proposed bedroom mix is eleven studios, seven one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms.
I'm sorry, slow down, slow down. What's the size of those, as you go through the count? Please give us the average size of the units, please?
I don't have that information in front of me. I was just gonna, you run through the relief that we're asking for very quickly, and then turn it over to the project architects.
Okay, so, so just, again, it's eleven studios, uh, what else?
Seven one-bedrooms, uh, and three two-bedrooms.
Okay, while you're on, if there's anybody supporting you, if there's an architect or anybody else on the call, please be sure that they're looking for the, um, for, um, the unit, the average unit sizes?
We, we can do that. I'll, I'll turn it over to the project architect very quickly.
But in the meantime, uh, do go ahead and talk to the violations.
Sure, um, so as I was saying, we are proposing nine off-street parking spaces, and the project will also have an enclosed bank storage area. Uh, the site's on a corner lot, on the corner of Talbot Ave and Spencer Street in Dorchester, very close to Codman Square, uh, and it's zoned as a three, three-F, six-thousand, uh, district. Um, the project received small project review from the, uh, approval from the BPDA Board, um, and we're now seeking dimensional relief for floor area ratio, building height, front yard requirements, and model setbacks. Um, and we're also seeking relief for the proposed commercial uses on the ground floor, uh, and for multifamily dwelling use on the upper floors. And finally, we're seeking relief, uh, for off-street parking and loading, um, which is also being addressed through this small project.
Okay, well, let's, let's go, let's leave the residential forbidden use aside, and let's, and talk, talk through the rest of the request for office, uh, restaurant, uh, office and restaurant use, um, for, at the, and retail use at the ground floor. Tell us what, what this is going to propose to look like. Colette, can, I'm looking at, uh, Google Maps, but in the meantime, Colette, can you pull up the, uh, rendering of what this ground floor space is supposed to look like?
And while you're doing that, why don't I turn it over to Travis Lee, who I think can give a better sense of the proposed uses there?
I think he's doing in sort of the focus with respect to how they're handling, um-
Hello, Madam Chair, uh, my name is Travis Lee. I am the, the developer of this project.
So Travis, you've been, you've been before this board before. Um, can you talk us through, and this, uh, talk us through, there are a number of, uh, forbidden uses here, um, and, um, I just wanna talk through the commercial uses, the retail, the restaurant, and the office uses, uh, before we talk in more detail about the residential.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, as you're, as you're aware, Talbot Avenue is a fairly major commercial corridor from Codman Square over to Blue Hill Avenue. Granted, a portion of Talbot Avenue fronts Harambe Park, and it's quite residential, but the, the part of Talbot Avenue from the commuter rail station all the way up to Codman Square has a variety of commercial uses. As we went through a City of Boston RFP process to be selected as developers for this city-owned site, we heard time and time and time again from the community that some, some commercial use on the ground floor would be highly, highly desirable. And so we have followed the desire of the community. Uh, as you'll note, there are seven or eight support letters that we have sent in from various-
So Travis, Travis, I, the, the only thing that I worry about with so much commercial use is, is the vacancy, you know? Even though I know this will be class A space, I just worry about the vacancy. But you will come through as the, um, restaurant uses, uh, um, well, if there's gonna be takeout. Um, so tell us how tall is this proposed building? And, and talk through some of the details. I'm hoping in the meantime that you have dimensions, um, on the, on the residential and the square footage of, uh, the square footage range of the studios, the ones and the twos.
So the project architect, Hansi Better-Bazza, is also on the line, and she might be better to, better suited to speak to some of those things.
Hansi, please put your name and address on the record and tell us, and talk us through this.
Uh, Madam Chair, the dimensions are on the plans, if you wanna do it that way.
Yeah, please tell us, it looks like it's a four-story building. Uh, can you tell us by any chance, um, it looks like it's covering the lot almost completely. What's the access to the parking? Is it a separate parking lot, or is it, um, is it, or is it underground parking? What, what does the parking look like? Okay, so it's, it's, um, okay, so it is surface parking. Um, okay, uh, and how is access to the building for the residential use is off of, um, Talbot Street? Any sense, uh, Mr. Olick, on the size of those units?
Yeah, if you look, if Colette pulls up the, uh, second and third floor plans, you'll see the studios are all about five hundred square feet. you'll see the studios are all about 500 square feet. The one-bedrooms are 600-some square feet, 620. And the two-bedrooms are like 750, 760. They're small, but they're not micro units.
They're not micro units, okay.
That's correct, Madam Chair. I, I can address the parking question, if that's okay with you.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So this project, 270 Talbot, is on a 25,000-square-foot lot currently owned by the city. Codman Square Neighborhood Development Corporation, whom you will see or have seen at the zoning board, is proposing a building on this same lot. We will be subdividing this lot into two lots, each 12,500 square foot. And you can see the proposed division of lots. And this parking lot that you see between, or you see behind this building, the, the parking lot will be shared for both buildings. So Talbot, 270 Talbot will have nine dedicated parking spaces. And the Codman Square building proposed behind this parking lot will have eight dedicated parking spaces.
And, and so you, you are coming in with 21 units. How many, how many units is Codman Square coming in with?
I believe they have 19.
They have 19. So on 27,000-square-foot lots, we have 40 units.
That's right. That's right, and this has been a heavily vetted.
So we have 40 units and eight, twos, sixteen, seventeen parking spaces.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Will, will any of your units, Travis, be affordable?
100% of my units will be income restricted.
What does that mean?
That means that families making at or below 90% of Boston's area median income will, will, these units will be reserved for those households. If you make more than 90% of Boston's area median income, you will not be able to live here.
And what's 90% AMI?
For a family of four, it's approximately 90.
We won't be seeing a family of four if these are two bedrooms.
Correct. For, for a, for a family of three, it's, it's $95, $96, $97,000 a year, something like that.
Okay, okay, okay. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Well, I think as, as your questions have covered, there's a limited amount of parking for a lot of units. And it's, you know, it's not on a major, it's not on a T-line. So I'm a little concerned about, about parking. But, you know, the drawings are adequate. As I said, these are smaller units. They're not micro units, but they're small. There will be no families of four or three living there.
Madam Chair, we are, we are one block from the Talbot Ave commuter rail station.
Yeah, commuter, commuter rail is, commuter rail is not an affordable option.
Well, you know, and, and I know the T has committed to making part of this, this line affordable for a period of time, but we just need to make sure for those people who walk off-hours that they do have access. And I think in a previous proposal, I was talking about somebody who may walk at Logan and needs to be there at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. They're not taking commuter rail, and they're not biking to work. You know, what option do they have? You know, and, and those are the things we need to start thinking about as we look at these proposals. But then, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Anissa Lessin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We have witnessed this applicant go and, working with the neighborhood development. And they've put in a lot of effort into this project. We do agree with you in terms of the positioning, the commuter rail and such. And we would like to go on record in support because they're offering more housing in the community and offering more restaurant space because that area is a bit of a food desert. So we would appreciate the restaurants in, at its, that area. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, I'm at the City Council, Andrea Kimbells' office. We would also like to go on record in support. They did a thorough community process, and they have lots of support from the community.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor, Anissa Savi George's office. Would like to go on record of support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have five letters of support.
Madam Chair, no. Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, can you please talk with your project review people and see if there's a way that we can get the better, the better of all worlds and have the housing, but also have, you know, some parking because I do think it's unfair to residents who may walk off-hours and need to rely on their own vehicles to not have access to these affordable units.
I've already made a note of it after the board's reaction from earlier today on Geneva, so I'll bring that up in a meeting.
Yeah, and also especially since we're going to see the, the rest of this block come up via Codman Square CDC.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Good luck, Travis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 835-348, 883 Hyde Park Avenue. This is to renovate the existing commercial space to convert from a daycare center to a registered marijuana dispensary. Violation is Article 69, Section 11, antecedent establishment is a conditional use. Name and address, pull the record, please.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Daniel Toscano, Drago in Toscano, located at One State Street, Suite 15, Boston, Mass. I represent the applicant, Evergreen Farms. I'd like to also introduce co-counsel, I've been working closely on this, Caitlin Bresson from MO Strategies, who should be on the line. And now I'd like to introduce Evergreen Farms. The owners and operators of Evergreen Farms are Sean Burdi. He is a lifelong resident of Boston, Mass, lives in Rosalia with his wife and children. He's a certified economic empowerment applicant and also a social equity program participant. Armani White is also another owner. He is a lifelong resident of the City of Boston. He's a community organizer and currently living in Lower Roxbury. He's also a certified economic empowerment applicant. And I also like to introduce Johan Dominici, who is Sean Burdi's wife. They live in the Rosalia area. She's currently a social equity program participant. And currently, she's a small business owner in the north end of Boston. As the secretary points out, we are seeking, we also support opening a marijuana dispensary at 883 Hyde Park Avenue. And the only violation for this particular area is a use regulation conditional use. Madam Chair, the existing plans are as a one-story commercial building, approximately 2,050 square feet of space. What we're going to do is renovate.
I'm sorry, how many, how many square feet of space?
It's 2,050 square feet of space. That's on a 3,000-square-foot lot. We are going to renovate the existing property, so there's no building going up any stories and no building out. We're going to just simply renovate the existing property. This is, property's located in a local convenience sub-district of the Hyde Park area. The, the, the operation is gonna, in terms of the operation, we're going to have 15 to 20 employees at this particular location.
I'm sorry, 15 to 20 employees?
15 to 20 employees. They may not all be working at the same time.
Yes, so I'm, I'm looking at this on Google Maps, and it looks like it's a single-story brick building
Correct.
between a number, between two residential uses. Can you tell me how you're anticipating to accommodate not only staff, but also clients?
So in regards to parking, as you can see, Madam Chair, you're correct to point out, there is no parking on-site. We have entered into an agreement with the property at 875, which is two doors down, for 10 parking spots exclusive for Evergreen Farms. Those won't be used by the employees, but specifically for customers of Evergreen Farms. In addition, we've done our research in regards to off-street parking. So along, within a quarter mile.
So, I'm sorry, Counselor, okay. I'm, I'm glad that you have made a parking plan, but usually to make sure that the, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. We need to make sure that that comes in as ancillary parking because we need to make sure that everything is, is more tightly connected and that it's not, you know, here today and gone tomorrow, especially for a use that could, for the number of employees that you're anticipating, create, you know, a certain amount of traffic. So I, I'll just put that out there because we are concerned about the quality of life issues for the abutters since that part of Hyde Park Ave looks like it becomes fairly residential as you go further down the street. But, so can you just, yes, so this is the perfect plan. Can you speak to the layout that we have up here?
So in regards to the layout, Madam Chair, members of the board, what you're looking at to the right side of my screen is the main entrance, which is the lobby area. So from entering the lobby area, you would be met by security personnel to checking IDs and entering the area. And once you, once you check, the IDs are checked, you're going to enter the additional lobby area where you're going to be met by a staff of Evergreen Farms who's going to punch in your registrations, which is.
Sorry, 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 Counselor. Colette, can you expand that a little bit so we can see more clearly what's going on? Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
So, so as I was moving on, as you pass, as security, after you present your identification to security, you're going to be met by one of Evergreen Farms' staff registration. They would take all your registration and background information where you're waiting in the lobby area, which is secured. And then, once you're able to enter the, another locked door, which gets you into the retail portion of the property. And then there's the cashier. And then there's a vault behind the cashiers, which will store products. There's no consumption on-site, there's no packaging on-site. Everything is, there's no cultivation on-site. Everything is going to be prepackaged by, at the time of delivery. So we anticipate first-time users using this establishment a 15-minute process in and out. We're checking in, registration, and purchasing your product. Once you're registered, things will get a lot easier. We can, we anticipate registration, after you're registered, people come in, maybe a two- to three-minute process of getting in and out during, during a sale. Also, we're working with our web designer, consistency, especially during this COVID, online registration and, and products online. So you can come in, just pick up, will make things a lot smoother and quicker as you, as you enter the establishment and exit. So things will be smooth. We anticipate, like I said, 15 minutes for a first visit, but once you're registered, things will be a lot quicker.
And so, Counselor, what are the proposed hours of operation? And what is the capacity, in your anticipated capacity, for your lobby and check, checking, check-in vestibule?
So the, the hours of operation are going to be 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily, seven days a week. We believe, based on our square footage in the front lobby and the check-in area, that accommodated approximately 20 people comfortably. During COVID, we certainly, once we get up and running and it's still COVID, we certainly will comply with any city and state regulations to make sure that this, we maintain social distancing and everybody's safe.
And so what's the zoning district that this is in?
This is in a local convenience. This is prior location of the daycare, as Secretary mentioned, but also talking with neighbors and residents and the owners who are very familiar with this location, the number of takeout restaurants at this location. So we believe.
And tell us, speak to us about delivery of product. When do you anticipate that's going to happen? You know, supply, when, when will your vault be supplied? And is there any security detail that you're proposing?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll let one of our members defer to either Sean or Armani to the, the security deliveries. But we anticipate two to three deliveries per week. They will be staggered on the off-hour because we do not have, as you can see from the, I don't have a loading zone, but they will be met by security, and they will change regularly. So, so for security reasons in terms of the timing. If, if Sean, Armani, Julian, or Caitlin need to have something else to offer on the deliveries, that'd be great. If not, I, I think I might have answered the chair's question.
Sure, I, I can add. All of our deliveries are going to be, sorry, thank you for having me. All of our deliveries are going to be off-hours and randomized so that they're not the exact same time. As well as our security system, we've sat down with the captain at Area E18, and we will link our security system directly to the police station.
Okay, and will you have security on-site at all times?
Yes, we will.
Okay. How, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich? You should be quite an expert, but the number of cases we are seeing lately.
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
With respect to parking, there's the 10 spaces that are, that you've arranged in the corner, but you have 15 employees on-site?
Well, not, not, not at one. So and then those 10 parking spaces, Mr. Levis, are only going to be for customers only. This Hyde Park Ave, MBTA bus number 32 travels directly by our, our establishment and stops directly across the street. But so they're, for you, just only for customers.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Joe Coppinger with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Caitlin Fleischman here on behalf of Counselor Ricardo Arroyo. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have 37 letters of support.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands.
Okay, let's hear from them, please.
Rachel?
My name is Rachel McCann. I live in Hyde Park at 52 Child Street. I am in support of this project. I think it's a great idea, especially where it's owned and operated, operated by locals. I don't think that parking has ever really been an issue on that end of Hyde Park Ave. And I think that because it used to be various takeout places, which is similar to the business that they would like to start, I think that it is a great location for it, and I am fully in support.
Thank you.
Hello, hi. This is Jim Kerker. I live at 56 Davison Street in Hyde Park. I'm president of the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. We are in, the entire association is in support of this project. It's, they, Sean has always been available at our meetings to answer any questions. They've worked very hard on this. And parking should be fine, as there has been restaurants there before. It's never really been a problem. So we are, again, we are in strong support of this, of this project.
Mr. Toscano, good to, to, to hear from you. I know sometimes you're not too happy with our decisions, but it's good that you keep persevering.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. This is Karen Foley, City Council, Anissa Savi George's office, and we'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with raised hands? May I have a motion, please? I think we could, we could have a fine review for the external and to this applicant only.
I'd like to make a motion to approve for this applicant only.
I'd like to make a motion to approve for this applicant only, and so BPDAs design review with, you know, signage and.
And, yeah, just lighten it up. All those in favor? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, who's opposed?
Ligris.
Okay, thank you. For the record, there's one person in opposition.
Following a next case, calling BOA one-one-one-nine-nine-zero-nine-one-fifty-one to one-fifty-nine Belgrade Avenue. This is the request for reviso for takeout for this petition or only. No work to be done. The violation is Article seven, section three. Conditions of a variance, for variance, this petition or only. Name and address for the record, please.
Sir, you're unmuted.
Is the applicant here for one-fifty-one to four-fifty-nine Belgrade?
Yeah, Circa Wong Bandis. He's unmuted.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Two minutes, drawings are fine.
Okay. Mr. Bondesaw, can you please put your name and address on the record? Tell us what the new name of this restaurant is, and I will right away say that your soft Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? For the record, this was a Thai restaurant. It is now a Thai restaurant. Nothing has changed. I don't even think the signage has changed yet. So everything is the same. They have been running it as a takeout. So can I hear if anybody who's in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Joe Coppinger with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other raised hands in support?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solomon, City Council, I'm the clarity person for records.
Thank you. So probably a motion for approval with the same takeout provisos is necessary. Motion, please.
So.
Is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Following a next case, calling BOA one-one-zero-two-four-three-two, forty-four to forty-six Belgrade Avenue. This is a three-story, eight-residential unit building, or one commercial space. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section thirty. Screening and buffering is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section thirty-two, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section thirty-three, traffic visibility across corner lot. Article sixty-seven, section twelve, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-seven, section twelve, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section twelve, the side yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-seven, section twelve, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulginie, Ten Forbes Road, Rantry. This afternoon is David Freed, who's the team architect, together with Dan Mangiaccotti and Justin Iataska, who are the owners, developers of the proposal.
So may I just find out first, right away, is this the zoning district? And how long have these property owners owned this property?
Madam Chair, the zoning district is neighborhood shopping.
Okay.
Owned it, I would say, for six months or eight months, or somewhere around that time.
Oh, that's a relief. Okay.
It may have been shorter than that, Madam Chair.
Okay, no, because this project has been an issue, because it came to this board, it had a lot of snowplows, et cetera, et cetera. It was denied, and they spoke about it ahead of time. So let's start and tell us what's being proposed now.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. As I stated, the zoning here is neighborhood shopping, sub-district, the lot size is seven-thousand four-hundred-and-forty-one square feet. For those of you who don't know, it's located at the intersection of Belgrade and Amherst, directly across the Saint Eterius Church, in between the Cooperative Bank and the Folsom Funeral Home. And it's also diagonally across the street from the Rosendale train station. The proposal is to raise a former auto body truck storage facility, to your point, and build a new three-story, eight-unit condominium building. It'll be thirty-two feet in height. There is one commercial retail space of thirteen-hundred-and-eighty square feet that will be at grade. And there are twelve off-street parking spaces with an entrance off of Belgrade Ave, just to the Folsom Funeral.
Give us the breakdown, please, on the units?
So there are eight two-bedroom, two-bath units. They range in size from thousand-seventy-six square feet to thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-eight square feet. The retail space, which is located at street level, is approximately thirteen-hundred-and-eighty square feet.
Colette, can you please show us the rendering? And how the parking will work? So it's, so you enter off of Belgrade and.
Correct. From the corner, and the parking's in the rear of the building.
And there's a great change, so you'll be maintaining that retaining wall?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Mark, you're on mute.
Sorry, the drawings are adequate. Just a minor note, that they're calling for a fourteen-foot curb cut on Belgrade Avenue. There's no reason to have it more than the standard ten to twelve.
Okay, yes, right now, Mr. Ehrlich, the entire lot is basically a curb cut, so we're closing it up.
But that's not a model to follow.
No, I agree, I agree. I'm just saying, we would definitely conform with whatever BTG suggests on that.
Okay. Is there any roof deck proposed?
There is not.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Joe Coppinger with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. We completed the community process. We did receive a number of letters of support from the applicant. I would also like to note that there were some concerns around the number of parking spaces provided. But we believe with the proximity to the Rosendale Village T-stop and the Washington Street bus line, that it's a large amount of parking spaces and creates a transit-oriented development, so to speak. We would also like to note that one abut it did note some concerns about construction management. So if this is to be approved, we just ask that they work with the abutters to make sure that runs smoothly. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I'm all for transit-oriented development if the transit is affordable, but I'm not sure that commuter rail is affordable to everybody. I don't know, what is it, seven dollars one way or something? But be that as it may, so anybody else to speak in support of this project or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Caitlin Fleishman here on behalf of Counselor Ricardo Arroyo. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have thirty-four letters of support.
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Steven?
Hello, Madam Chair. My name is Steve Goditis. I am an abutter. I live on Amherst Street. When I open my front door, I look at the back of this auto body stop and would look at the back of this new building. I wanted to express my support for this, for this project, but also to reiterate what was just expressed. Amherst Street is a one-way, very narrow street with parking on both sides. Even without construction, it is very, very tight and very congested, and is one of the main thoroughfares into Rosendale Square. Construction and construction zoning and parking and the construction site is a huge concern of mine. The other area of concern of mine, and again, I am in support of this project, is the size and the height of the building. It is, if you look at the pictures, they look absolutely lovely. If you walk into Rosendale Square, it has been a concern of residents, myself included, at Rosendale, and the path of the height of new buildings. And it is a concern of mine, the height of this building, in terms of how it connects to the skyline of the rest of Rosendale. I'm pleased to hear about the parking, but I am, continue to be concerned about the parking. If there are eight units, each of two bedrooms, as you know and have expressed, Rosendale is a thriving community, although there is a commuter rail there. I would ask that there be more consideration given to the number of parking if eight units continues to be part of this plan. Thank you for your time, for listening.
Madam Chair, we just addressed that. We are.
Hold on, hold on. Ms. Ambassador, any more raised hands?
There are no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Pulginie.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that we actually gave that a lot of thought, and when we came into this, the building height's thirty-two feet in a thirty-five-foot zone. We were very aware of the neighbors. They were very respectful when we had the community meetings. As Mr. Fortune stated, we were, in addition to the community meetings, canvassed the neighborhood and met with them, showed them the plans and all. I know some of them are naked. We have thirty-seven letters of support, including a letter of support from Saint Eterius Church, which, as you know, is directly across the street.
Yeah, my question is, and it was just for another project we saw in Dorchester earlier, is, you know, if there is a need for your commercial space, even though this is neighborhood shopping, if, you know, you could, you know, reorient it so you have a great number, a greater, a decent lobby and a greater number of parking spaces, so that the neighborhood isn't overly impacted by overflow parking?
Yeah, we just felt like, you know, twelve parking spaces for eight units was, you know, I would suggest probably more than adequate. And, you know, where is proximity? And I understand your point regarding the commuter rail. However, we are at, you know, a short block down the street to, work street to Washington Street, where you can get the buses back and forth from Forest Hills.
Let me see. The second thing I would like to just put on the record is that the design of the projects that we've seen in Rosendale have been really interesting. A couple of weeks ago, we approved a project on Anawan. There's been some projects going on that have gone up off of Cummings all over the neighborhood that have been more interesting and just more respectful. The project across the street on the other side of the church is probably, is probably the exception. So I would suggest that if there's a motion for approval, that we look very, very significant design review, because we do not want to see another box dropped into a neighborhood where it's unnecessary. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDAs design review. And reduce the curb cut.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Jeff, you've heard this, you've heard us talk about the boxy appearance of the projects we saw a few weeks ago on Washington Street. Maybe this can have the better of time review.
Yes, we've already had discussions about that. We had the same issue in South Boston as well.
Okay, excellent. So motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board.
We're going to go back to an early case on Shamet Ave. Hopefully Shamet Ave is on. Going to call this in for the third time. Calling BOA one-zero-six-six-one-six-nine-five-zero-one-Shamet Ave. It's a blue green window, green and new door opening. Call a new door violation, Article sixty-four, section nine point four, townhouse/row house extension. Is Shamet Ave on?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, put your name and address on the record, and I will, while I have the record here, acknowledge that our newest member, Mr. Ligris, has gone on the record recusing himself on this project. So please, tell us what's being proposed.
My name is Francis DeLuca. I'm the owner of five-zero-one-Shamet Ave in South End. And what we're proposing is a balcony to be added to the rear of our unit. It's a steel balcony.
How, give us the dimensions, and is it bracket-supported?
Yeah, the dimensions are six by fifteen, and it would be bracket-supported as well.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The plan's very straightforward. It's just extending a balcony on the rear of a building.
Is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kim Chrisioli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Our office held an abutters meeting on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The applicant reached out to their neighbors who supported this proposal for a rear deck. The proposal is consistent with other rear decks approved by the board. The applicant also has the support of the Hurley Blocks Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, just for a record here, before we go to the interpretation, a case that was called at eleven-thirty, Saratoga Street, was actually on the books till one o'clock.
Which one was that, I'm sorry?
It was the first case for eleven-thirty rediscussion, Saratoga, four oh seven Saratoga.
Yep.
I made a motion for denial without prejudice. In the interim, we've been notified that they were on for one o'clock, and it did say one o'clock on the paperwork, unfortunately, but I believe they're on now. So what I'd like to do, to see if they're on before I call it into the record, if we can find out if Saratoga Street is on.
My name is Bonnie Chan. I am representing the owner of four oh seven.
Could you hold on two seconds? I have to call it into the record.
Okay.
I need to take my motion back from denial without prejudice.
Yes, call it into the record and undo that.
This is case BOA one-zero-zero-six-seven-six-five-four-oh-seven-Saratoga Street. Was extend living area to unit one into the basement by building an interior wall petition to propose enlarged two windows and one door opening to meet the basement degress requirement. The violation is Article fifty-three, section nine, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Madam Chair, as I said before, I'm going to take back my motion for denial without prejudice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So please go ahead, put your name and address on the record, and tell us what's being proposed.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Chan. I'm with JCBT Architect, five eighty-five Washington Street, Quincy, Mass., oh-two-one-six-nine. I represent the owner for four oh seven Saratoga Street. The existing building is a three-family. The client's looking to expand the first-floor living space into the basement by putting two new bedrooms and one bath in the basement and removing.
So hold on. So. So, so hold on, um, so, um, tell us what the floor-to-ceiling height is in the basement, tell us utilities are separate, and tell us how far it is from the floor to the bottom of the sills in the basement.
The proposed uh basement window ceiling height is seven foot six, excuse me, the floor to uh the bottom of the window sill is at three feet.
It's a three feet and, um, okay, um, and this is gonna be two bedrooms, are the utilities separate for the units?
Uh, the utility for the basement will be combined with the first floor, is the extent extending living space to the first-floor apartment.
Mr. Earl, can you help me out here?
Yeah, so if you look at the drawing on A one three, the proposed basement plan, you got a mechanical closet that is separate, which is what you were asking about, you have a, if the elevations, you have a drop in grade, so that it's uh, so that by the rear, um, it's okay, but the drawings show seven foot, um, uh, seal floor to ceiling. So I'm a little confused about what why it says seven feet, not seven-six, it should say seven-six.
It should say seven-six, I apologize for that.
Why, are you saying that's a typo?
Yes. That was the existing ceiling height, the proposed ceiling height would be seven-six.
Okay, so how are, how are you gonna get the extra six inches, are you excavating or?
Yes, we have to excavate down and uh, right now, the slab is uneven in the basement, certain area got seven and certain areas seven-two, so we're cutting it down and putting a new slab.
So can, Collette, can you please go to the proposed basement plan so we can just?
It's right, it's right, it's right at the bottom of of what you, yeah, just, yeah, right there, there you go.
Okay.
And you can see it says seven foot zero uh ceiling, so, I mean, if we, if we choose to approve this, we should, there certainly should be no building code relief.
And how many bedrooms are on the first floor?
Uh, existing three-bedroom, but proposed two-bedroom in the first.
So proposed two bedrooms on the, in on the first floor and two bedrooms in the basement?
Correct.
Hmm, okay. Okay, any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Fisa Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you, given that, may I have a motion, please?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but accompany that with a no building code relief revise up because the uh, uh, the drawings need to be adjusted to show seven foot six floor to ceiling height.
I'll second that, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we go to the interpretations, I want to ask all Board members to stay on for a few minutes after the, after the hearing closes, because, you know, if we were in person, we would have had a chance to uh talk to Mr. Ligerus, but since we are remote, um, I just want to give everybody a chance to do a, a meet and greet, an online meet and greet. Okay, so please stay on. Um, let's watch the interpretation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, going to the interpretation case BOA one 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 eight zero four eight eight seventy-four East Sixth Street. The petitioner seeks a determination that Inspeccional Services Department had issued a permit, the permit was issued as an allowed use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, uh, my name is Michael Duffy, I'm from Timon Davis and Duffy, representing a Butters uh at, to the property at eight seventy-four East Sixth Street. My offices are at one hundred Cambridge Street, Boston, Massachusetts, fourteenth floor.
So you're, um, okay, so you're uh representing the Butters, who is representing the Sylvestas?
That would be me.
I, I'm sorry, who's representing the owners of eight seventy-four East in Sixth Street?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members, that would be me, uh, Madam Chair, members, I'm George Maranski, an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston, I'm joined by one of the property owners, David Mateo, who has a residential address of eight seventy East Sixth Street in South Boston, also joined by project architects Anthony Pizzani and William Paquette of Pizzani and Associates, three seventy-four Congress Street in Boston.
Okay, so what I would like to do is, um, as is the case with all interpretations, I will just hear from the two parties here, we will not be taking testimony from anybody. Uh, what I do want to hear from Mr. Duffy, please put on the record the reason for this uh request for interpretation.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, we are requesting this interpretation because we believe that the uh building permit was issued in error. Uh, there have been changes to the developer's project that merit and require resubmission of the plans to this board for re-review in connection with a conditional use permit, which is how this project came into light. Uh, this is a project where the developer began to erect this building without a permit and also began construction without filing a notice of intent with a conservation commission, despite having a portion of its site in a jurisdictional area.
Okay, just hold on, um, can you just tell us what the project is, um, and what specific element of uh you are uh seeking an interpretation that ISD heard, that ISD heard, I'm sorry.
So the project, um, I'm obviously not the proponent of the project, but this is a, um, it was a proposed before this board under a special permit or conditional use permit as a three-story building with six units. It's, it, this board denied uh the conditional use permit, that matter was appealed to the uh Superior Court, came back to this board in uh two thousand and eighteen with instructions to issue a conditional use permit under the GPOD. Uh, the project subsequently was, uh, had stop work orders issued, had to go through a conservation commission notice of intent process, uh, went through approximately nine or ten months of uh back and forth with the conservation commission.
Tell me, how did ISD, or how are you saying that ISD heard?
ISD was not authorized to issue a building permit on a conditional use permit that this board authorized under a different plan for a different building. Uh, and that is one issue that occurred. Secondarily, um, I would state that the conditional use permit that this board issued back in two thousand and eighteen has lapsed, uh, there is no uh use that was made or commenced within the two years since the issuance of that permit. Would further state that this uh project somehow evaded review under Article sixty-eight, apparently due to the IPod regulation that was passed in July of two thousand seventeen. The application for this project was filed in April two thousand seventeen prior to approval of the IPod regulations, and and uh the applicant knew all along that this proposal would have to come to the ZBA given its location in the GPOD. Under the IPods language, however, this project was exempt from the IPod regulations, thus we submit Article sixty-eight applied. That was undoubtedly ISD's initial opinion as well, as they issued a refusal notice dated June twelfth, two thousand seventeen citing violations of Article sixty-eight as basis for denial. Furthermore, this board's notice for the initial hearing in September of two thousand ten seventeen notified the public that one of the determinations to be made was IPod applicability. Apparently, that aspect in the hearing was never addressed and remained outstanding. The IPod regulations were temporary when they were initially passed, were extended for only a short time and have subsequently been repealed more than a year ago. There's no good reason for this project to be exempted or grandfathered from the applicable zoning under Article sixty-eight, when it was perceived initially on permits that were issued at risk. Uh, it was exempt from.
Now, hold on, um, I just want to make sure, um, if, so you, so you've covered um the fact that it's different plans, uh, different building, the time lapse, you've covered Article eighty, is there anything else that you need to cover?
No, you're, no, no, Madam Chair, I would say those are the three main issues that we would raise, there, there are questions with the plan, uh, it's proposing to be under forty feet to stay, what I understand, under the height limitation in terms of feet, uh, but you show plan details with floors that would only be eight foot six, um, I think perhaps being a little bit unlikely.
So you're asking you're also questioning height, or are you not questioning height?
I am questioning height.
Okay.
And I'm also questioning whether this parking plan could work, the portions of the parking garage where the height is only five foot eight, um, and it proposes to have nine spots in there, and I think it's, uh, requires somebody to work a Tetris miracle to get those cars in and out of those spots.
Okay, 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 so hold on, um, may I hear from, is, is there a representative on from ISD?
Yes, Mark Joseph, I'm gonna unmute him now.
Mr. Joseph, can you tell us why this permit was issued?
Well, the permit was issued, it was, uh, there was only one violation, the violation was resolved at the board, and then there was an issue after that about the parking being under flood zone according to Conservation District. They went there, they went to the process for about nine months, they restocked the building for a few feet so they won't be under the flood zone, and but the entire building met the code, the height is good, everything's good, and good at here.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Maranski, uh, can you speak through, um, sounds like this was a long process if it went to the Superior Court, uh, please, can you backtrack for us and, um, give us your, um, um, your version of the story?
Certainly, my version is quite simple, uh, Madam Chair and members, uh, the board approved this matter on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, that was on a remand order from the Superior Court. Uh, the board had previously denied uh the petitioner's application for green belt protection overlay district permit, uh, my clients appealed that decision to the Superior Court, the Superior Court reached.
Sorry, Mr. Maranski, just to be clear, the remand and the initial application were just for GPOD?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, it was denied simply uh on a request for a GPOD permit, uh, the City of Boston entered, City Boston Law Department entered into a settlement agreement with my client's uh litigation attorney, the result was a, an order of the court dated February second, two thousand and eighteen whereby the matter was remanded to the board uh for action not inconsistent with the court's order, set, which was essentially to uh approve a GPOD permit subject to only reasonable site plan conditions. But when my clients uh were working with the uh Conservation Commission, uh, due to the fact that this is located uh in a Zone AE, uh, the Conservation Commission required um the building uh to be raised.
I'm sorry, what is Zone AE, what is Zone AE?
It's a, it's a flood hazard zone, it's a, it's a higher hazard than 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 Flood X, and it requires that there can be no living space or mechanical, uh, any utilities, et cetera, uh, within the, the area of the flood plain. The result, quite simply, is that.
Okay, the base flood elevation, so.
Base flood elevation here is fifteen feet.
Okay.
Result was that the building had to be raised two feet, uh, two feet. Uh, when it was initially approved by this board, it was zoning compliant at approximately thirty-seven feet eleven inches, it is now uh remains zoning compliant at approximately thirty-nine feet eleven inches. The revised plans based on the order of conditions issued by the Conservation, uh, I'm sorry, by the, um, by the Conservation Commission, were then uh distributed to both the Boston Planning and Development Agency and back to the Inspeccional Services Department. The design review architect at the BPDA, Michael Canizzo, uh, granted design review approval to the revised plans on June twelfth, two thousand and twenty, and um my client then verified with Mr. Joseph, Plans Examiner, that no new zoning violations, or no zoning violations were uh were created by the change. Uh, the building permit then issued, and and.
So, so, I'm sorry, I just need to make sure I'm getting it right, so no zoning violations were created by the change, okay? Okay, so go ahead.
And 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 now the appeal, um, again, in the written. Uh, it is indicated that the, the appellant's here, um, believed that the matter should have been brought back to the Board of Appeal so that the revised plans could be re-approved. Um, and it was ISD's determination that this was not necessary, again, because there are no zoning violations created, they remain zoning compliant, uh, and also that, that, that the current height may in some way be violative to the code, uh, which, which is also not true, as I said, the code here is thirty-nine feet eleven inches, maximum building height under Article sixty-eight for this location is forty feet.
So the, the, so the maximum building height is forty and you come in uh an inch below. Um, okay, um, then, uh, I'm supposing that because of base flood elevation, you needed to extend the height of the ceiling for the parking, so what is the ceiling height in uh in the parking area?
Uh, one moment, Madam Chair, I'll let uh Mr. Paquette address that.
Madam Chair, members, this is William Paquette. Uh, the, the height in the garage is adequate, it's not a five-foot feet and height or whatever was, is never.
Okay, so, uh, so height in, in the parking area is adequate, okay?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. So, um, thank you. Uh, going back to uh Mr. Duffy, anything else that you want to add?
I do, um, in the iterations of plan changes that occurred following the Conservation Commission process, there was a parapet added to the top of this building as well, uh, which adds an additional three feet to the height, that was not shown on the initial plans that were submitted to this board.
Listen, Mr. Mr. Duffy, I'm sorry, uh, every time I ask you something else, you add something else, so first I have the different plan, different building, you have the time lapse, you have Article eighty, and then you added uh some other issues, is the parapet the only, last outstanding issue?
Uh, is the parapet the last outstanding issue? I don't understand.
Um, okay, so, um, may I have a, a response from, um, Mr. Maranski or any representative from that team about the parapet?
Um, Mr. Paquette's reviewing the plans, but parapets don't count towards building height under the Boston zoning code.
They do under Article sixty-eight.
Mr. Maranski, can you uh speak to sixty-eight? The other one?
Manager, I'm, I'm abiding by the definition of building height contained in Article two A of the Boston zoning code. And I'm, I'm not even conceding that, that the parapet is, uh, would, would be over forty feet, but, um, no, no, if, if, even if that were an issue, it's, it's merely a parapet, so.
Okay.
Also, Madam Chair, uh, uh, according to Article two A, building height is not going all the way to parapet, it's from the beam, from the top beam of the roof, that's what constitutes building height.
But under Article sixty-eight, it expressly states that all roof structures have to be considered as part of the building height.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm gonna stop all conversation right there. Um, Miss, um, um, Mr. Ambassador, can you mute every, everybody, including Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Okay, so from the way I gather it is that, and what's been explained as far as process is concerned, because I do remember this coming back to us for a remand order, um, listening to that, um, and that, in fact, if there is, um, there was a cited flood hazard, um, before it was, the building was raised, but it's still under the forty-foot building height maximum, um, Mr. Joseph, uh, who is the technical expertise on this, um, talks about the definition of height, so that, in fact, it is not, um, not, um, exceeding the height, so it sounds to me like the permit was issued as it should have been issued following all the process. following all the process and all the different reviews that it should have followed. So may I have a motion that ISD did not-- or in issuing this permit?
So move.
Is there a second?
Fair enough.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That is the decision of this board on this interpretation. I thank everybody for their time. Again, if I could have the board members stay on to have a small meet and greet with Mr. Ligris. The public meeting of this board is now-- is postponed. We will have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and we'll see you in December.